And good evening. Welcome to a public hearing on rates, Thurston Conservation District rates and charges. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, and to my left is the Board Vice Chair, Gary Edwards, and to my right is Ty Mensah, Commissioner Mensah. To his right is the Clerk of the Board, Labonita Bomar, and sitting on the side here is County Manager Romero Chavez, and to his right is Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. So with that, we are here to this public, to have this public hearing to consider approving a system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District on properties in those portions of unincorporated Thurston County, the municipalities of Lacey, Olympia, Tamwater, and those portions of the municipalities of Rainier, Tinano, and Yelm within the Thurston Conservation District as of their boundaries established in 1947 for collection in 2020 to 2024. The purpose is Thurston County were seeking public input on the proposed system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District. There's a sign up sheet in the back like this, and so if you'd like to add your name to the list, if you wish to testify, please do so, and then we'll go through calling you up one by one, I will. You'll have three minutes in which to testify. I will be calling out the names for oral testimony, and then the next person up, so they're ready to go, keep going. When you hear your name, please come forward to the podium to testify. Time may not be given to another person, and if you haven't done so, please silence your cell phones, that'd be helpful, no outbursts, and when you're testifying, please address the board and not to the audience. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and we're going to have a staff presentation, but I'm going to start with County Manager Romero Chavez.
Thank you, Commissioners, good evening. Let me give you a little bit of background related to the legality of the public testimony we'll be receiving today related to the Thurston Conservation District raising charges. The Thurston Conservation District is a governmental subdivision of the state of Washington organized under Chapter 89.08 of the RCW to provide for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, including protection and conservation of natural resources. As you stated on your opening statements, Commissioner Hutchings, the boundaries of the Thurston Conservation District includes incorporated Thurston County, the municipalities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tamwater, and those portions of the municipalities of Rainier, Tinano, and Yelm within the Thurston Conservation District as of their boundary that was established in 1947. RCW 8908.0405 authorizes the county legislative authority, U, to approve a system of rates and charges for conservation, for the Thurston Conservation District to find activities and programs to conserve natural resources and other exercises of authority of the public health, safety, and welfare as authorized by law. Also, RCW 89.08400 and 405, the Thurston Conservation District needs to conduct a public hearing on the proposal. The Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on June 20, 2019. As a result of the public hearing, the Board of Supervisors of the Thurston Conservation District passed Resolution Number 2019-11 on July 2, 2019, to approve and submit a proposed system of rates and charges for the Board of County Commissioners' consideration. Also, the Board of Supervisors of the Thurston Conservation District passed Resolution Number 2019-12 also on July 2, 2019, providing a process for an individual property owner to appeal a raise of charges applied to a parcel or property they own. Also, the Board of County Commissioners approved the system of raising charges in 2019 under ordinance number 15686 and 15723 to support for the district's proposed programs and approve the systems of recent charges just for 2019, which ends December 31, 2018, and that is the reason why you're exercising your legislative authority at this time. RCW 8908400 and 405 requires the Board of County Commissioners to conduct a public hearing before you exercise approval of the system of raising charges, and that is the purpose of the public hearing today. This public hearing was advertised on the Niskuale Valley News on August 29 and September 5, also was advertised on the Olympian on August 29, September 12, and September 19. Also required by law, we posted the public hearing requirements on Monday, September 16, on Yelm Food Co-op, East Side Olympia Food Co-op, West Side Olympia Food Co-op, Tinano Post Office, Rainier Post Office, Tamwater Library, Lacey Library, and Olympia Library. So far, we have received a total of 26 written comments as well as verbal comments. Out of the 26 comments we have received, 18 were in support of the five-year extension of their system of rates and charges. Six did not state the number of years, but they were supportive of the rates and charges as proposed. One was supportive of one-year implementation of the rates and charges, and we received one in opposition of implementing any rates and charges. That's all I have for you as a matter of background. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Romero. So I'm going to ask Sarah Moorhead to come forward, interim director, executive director of the TCD, and provide background information about the proposal.
I think she's there now.
She's the executive director.
Oh, that's right, you're there now, that's right. Of course she's there, I see her.
I'm here, actually.
But yeah, she's not the interim, yeah, you're right.
Actually, that's my typo.
Thank you, sir.
That's just fine.
Welcome, Executive Director.
Thanks for having us. We're really excited to be here to have this conversation. We're really excited to talk to you about this year's proposal and also reflect a little bit on this last year, and thank you for approving this 2019 rates and charges system for us because it has made all the difference for our Conservation District. As you mentioned, I'm Sarah Moorhead. I'm now officially the executive director of the Conservation District, and there is no place that I would rather be. So quickly, what is the Conservation District? As you well know, we're a non-regulatory voluntary conservation entity that helps landowners and operators manage all different types of natural resource concerns on their property, and we do that through education, technical, and financial assistance. We submitted a rates and charges proposal, as Mr. Chavez has already stated, through a resolution that was adopted by our Board of Supervisors on July 2 of this year. That rate schedule is identical to the rate schedule that was presented and approved by the County Commissioners in 2019, and so we're looking to renew that same rate schedule for a five-year period of time. Some examples of things that rates and charges has done for our district and our community in the last year is provide us with financial and organizational stability, which has contributed to things like building a voluntary stewardship program at the district. We've been able to additionally allocate local resources to the funding that's provided through the county to make a robust and sustainable program, where we formerly had to contract a piece of that out to other districts that had capacity. We now have two technical staff that are able to serve and build that program robustly. Speaking of staff, we've had a 100% increase in our staffing capacity in 2019. We lost a lot of that capacity in 2018, and we've rebuilt. Much of that is technical staff focused, so the folks that are out on the ground serving landowners directly, as well as necessary administrative and financial staff. We now have match for state grants and the ability to add capacity to develop them, so we're able to partner with folks like Thurston County and other partner entities to bring additional funding and resources into our community and do more work on the ground. We're able to leverage these dollars that we are garnering locally, which makes up about a third of the district's budget, and apply for about two-thirds worth of grant funding to bring into this community. We've been able to reopen our soil testing program and our equipment rental programs. One of the biggest needs we've heard from our community is we need a bigger manure spreader for agricultural producers. Well, guess what? We have one now. We have been able to have the capacity and the financial support to work directly with the state auditor's office this year. I'm proud to say we have a clean audit for our period of 2015 to 2018, and we've developed a wonderful working relationship with them. We have provided K-12 education support for our South Zone Green Program, which works with over 2,000 students throughout Thurston County. We've been able to about triple our cost share projects, so those are the on-the-ground projects that we are implementing with landowners throughout our community to identify and address natural resource needs. Through our cost share program, we provide 85% of the funding to implement a practice to match a landowner's 15%. This reduces a lot of barriers to folks that would like to be good stewards of their land but financially can't support implementation of a $50,000 manure storage structure, for example. Ultimately, we're able to support landowners anywhere with any concern in our county and our community with this funding. It really is the ability to target it, to address local priorities and local needs is there, rather than being subject solely to grant-funded priorities and geographies. We're able to be flexible and adaptable to the needs of our community. I want to thank you for that because that's made all the difference to our district and to our community, and we've been able to meet people where they're at and identify and address their needs. So looking towards the future, we have a five-year funding proposal in front of you. We are also undergoing a five-year strategic planning process. We'd like to invite partners, we'd like to invite our commissioners, and we'd like to invite our community to be involved in that. In November, we have a series of three public meetings. We're going to go throughout the community in Lacey, in Rochester, in Yelm, and we're going to connect with folks in those areas, meet them where they're at again, and say, how would you like to see the district serve you in the next five years? How would you like to see our organization function? Where are the gaps? Where can we help plug in? This five-year strategic plan will cover the same years, the same five-year span that we're proposing this five years' worth of funding. So we'd like to invite the community and our partners, commissioners, to be involved in that process and be involved in shaping the future of our district. I have an overview of all of the points that I mentioned here, as well as the dates and times for our strategic planning, community sessions available on the front desk. The last thing that I will mention again about the rates is that they are statutorily capped, so up to $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre, which is not something that can be increased by either the district or the county commissioners. It's an act of the legislature as included in our RCW. The majority of parcels in Thurston County are five acres or less, which means our average community members will pay annually to the district about $5 or $5.50. Myself, I have a 16-acre farm in unincorporated Thurston County. I'll pay $6.60. That's what I paid this year. So that's $5 per parcel plus $1.60 for that 10 cents per acre. A 200-acre farm, for example, would pay about $25 a year, just as an example of how the rates impact people on the ground and what their annual payments would be. So again, please provide the district feedback. That's an open invitation to everyone in the community, to the commissioners, and help us reshape the next chapter of the Conservation District. And please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Thank you for allowing us the time and space to be here today.
Executive Director Moorhead, you said the community sessions are at the front desk, you mean over here? Or where are they?
The front table, yeah.
The front table, okay.
Yeah, it's a sheet that looks like this, so we'll be doing a little bit of a roadshow, and we'll have a written comment period as well for folks that aren't able to attend.
Okay. Good, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
With that, I'm going to ask people, like I said earlier, and for those of you that walked in late, I have the sign up sheet. If you haven't signed up and would like to, the sign up sheet's from the back. I will call your name in order, and as I call the first one, I will also announce the second person so they can come up and be ready to go as well. You'll have three minutes. Labonita Bomar, the Clerk of the Board, has the timer, and the timer's up here, except for three minutes. At the end, it'll ding, and you'll know your time's up. If you're mid-sentence, go ahead and finish your sentence, but don't finish your paragraph, please, and you're not allowed to donate your time to another speaker as well. When you come up, please identify yourself by name and address for the record, and we're going to begin. First up is Robert Haskell, followed by Doug Rushton.
Hi, I'm Robert Haskell.
Oh, way to get to the microphone, got to record you.
Oh, I'm Robert Haskell.
I live on 6335 to Lurie Lane in Olympia, Washington. I am opposed to this measure. I'm mostly opposed to the tactic of targeting homeowners for funding. My concern is, as of now, I pay $10,623.88 a year, $10,000, almost $11,000 in taxes every year. A few months ago, I noticed that we needed some firemen, so we put it to vote to the general public, a majority of which don't own property, to vote on forcing property owners to pay for these firemen. I agree that we need firemen, but now I went from $885 a month to $965 a month, and my And my concern is, my property and my house is paid for. I did plan to retire there. I would like to be able to retire there. I do not see how I'm going to be able to sustain on a fixed income when, me being a property owner, my bank account is an open checkbook for the local government. All they have to do is put it to a vote to the general public. The general public, most of whom don't own property, vote to force me to pay. And then what happens when I can no longer meet these payments from all the taxes and levies? I understand that we put into law some time ago we can only tax a certain percentage, up to a certain percentage. So we essentially started calling it something different: fines, fees, levies. And so I work 65, 70 hours a week trying to provide a life for my family. I have a nice little house, some property, that me and my family would like to retire in, but it seems like I'm being worked against in that by the local government. I'm constantly getting letters, "Hey, we're going to take more money. You're going to pay for this. You're going to pay for that. We're going to put it to a vote." So I guess, you know, my statement is, when is enough enough? When do we stop targeting local property owners to fund everything? I mean, I noticed that when we did want me to pay for the firemen, there was hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of signs everywhere. They were all over. You couldn't drive a few blocks without seeing one. But for this, to come and, you know, oppose this, you put one flyer up in Olympia at the Co-op, one flyer, and ran an ad, what did you say, in the Olympian? Two stories in a newspaper? It's hardly equal. It seems off to me. It seems like there's an agenda. So, I mean, I guess I need to be educated, but is there a plan to ease the predatory tactics on the local property owners? Do you guys have anything in place, maybe using some of the $10,700 that I already pay you in taxes to fund some of these projects? Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will also give this admonishment, or maybe not admonishment, information. This is your chance to speak and testify to the commission, but don't expect answers or debate or discussion. It's not, it won't happen here. That's not the forum for it.
Sure.
So we're not being rude by not answering your question.
Right. What would be the forum? I pay a lot for local schools, but they don't teach us how to navigate all the different branches.
Are you going to stick around for the rest of the hearing?
Yes, yeah, I would like to find out if I can continue to...
Yes, then I would, I'll direct you right over here to the county manager, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Doug Rushton, followed by Jim Gochet.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having us. I'm Doug Rushton. I live at 2726, 26th Avenue Northeast out in the South Bay area. I own five acres. I pay $5.50 a year for Conservation District support, and I would gladly give up two lattes to pay that $5.50. I think that's pretty cheap. I would like you to note the level of community engagement that's happened over the past six months or so, where it's way more community engagement. We're engaging with the community, plus TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council. We're looking at establishing an advisory group, as we mentioned a few months back to you all. We're up to snuff with the Conservation Commission requirements. We had a clean State Auditor's Office audit. And I will note, I wish I'd have gone before, Sarah, because she's already said most of what I want to say. We've got an annual plan and a budget that's been updated. We're starting on a long-range plan. The equipment and soil testing program and other popular programs are back in place. The CD uses the voluntary incentive-based approach, non-regulatory, which helps us, which helps people help us, help those who are concerned about not getting entangled in a regulatory web. And we know the processes. We can help them with that. I think investing in the Conservation District is a good, cost-effective use of public funds. And we'd love to give the commissioners, you, a tour of some of our projects so you can see how those funds are actually spent and ask questions, and you can see how good it is for the community, our community, and our county. I urge approval of the updated system of Rates and Charges as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Jim Gochet, followed by Esther Cronenberg.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jim Gochet, Friendly Grove Farm, former supervisor for the Thurston County Conservation District. And I was the chair of the Ag Liability Committee for three years on the voluntary stewardship program. I'm a strong supporter of the district's system statewide. They do some good work, and there's some very good people in the system. I'm concerned about this particular Conservation District, was when I was on the board, continue to be. And there's a number of things I'd like to talk to you about, but unfortunately, there's not much time. So I'd like to speak specifically to one thing. There's precedent for putting the commission, putting precedent, putting conditions on this funding. And I would suggest to you that one of the best things you can do is to require that elections of supervisors be put on the county ballot and that the county auditor be made the election supervisor. Right now, the laws don't provide minimum protections of most other elections. Staff can be the administrator for the elections. And frankly, they're not publicized. It's difficult to vote. In a jurisdiction where we have nearly 186,000 voters, we have a couple hundred people voting typically in these elections. Because it's so hard to get ballots, it's difficult to cast them, and it is, a lot of people just don't know the votes are going on. I'll tell you that when I was running for election, I set up a table down at the farmer's market, and I asked people four questions, and I was surprised at how uniform their responses were. First of all, I asked them if they had heard about the Conservation District. And they said, "Yeah, sort of." I said, "Do you know what it does?" Fewer people did. I said, actually, it might have been three questions. I said, my last question was, "Do you realize you're funnier through your taxes?" And that's when people started to get angry. And my fourth question, as a matter of fact, as I was running for the board, "I need your vote." And people really got angry because they would say things like, "You know, I've voted, I've been voting for 40 years, and I've voted in every election. I've never heard of a Conservation District election." So I suggest to you that it would be in the public's interest, in the voting public's interest, in people who want to run for office, and frankly, in the public in general, if you were to put a requirement on this funding, whether you make it for one year or for four years, to require that it's on the county ballot. One other thing I'll tell you is that a common response from Conservation Districts is they can't afford to do it. If they can't afford to run an honest election, a real election with proper safeguards, they can't afford to be the public agency that they truly are. So I would recommend that one condition to you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Esther Cronenberg, followed by Betsy. Betsy, I don't want to mess up your last name. DeRude?
Hi, I'm Esther Cronenberg.
Hi, Esther.
I live at Cooper Point. I speak in support of the Conservation District to ask the commission to approve the renewal of rates and charges for the next five years. I also speak for Mr. Jerry Durka, who can attend because of his disability. As has been said, the Washington State Commission has certified TCD's in total compliance and has restored its funding. The state auditor completed an examination of TCD over the last four years and found nothing wrong. TCD is again working to protect our environment, educate the public, preserve farmland, and restore habitat. Their work continues to be vital, as outlined in letters to the commission by your own Environmental Health Department in 2017, when their funding was initially lost. While the investigations and scrutiny of the last year now clearly show that every accusation of financial mismanagement leveled against TCD was completely false all along, I want to remind the commissioners how it came to be that the Conservation District was forced to endure almost two years of unjustified attacks that deprived the county and its citizens of its services, subjected its staff to tremendous amounts of stress in a toxic work environment, and required the time of a sizable number of citizens who mobilized for months, writing letters and alerting the public, and attended torturous, hours-long meetings for months in support of TCD to stop the attack on this treasured institution. Two commissioners finally removed from office by WSEC obstructed the work since 2017, causing it to lose its funding. They lost grant money, more than $1 million, all the while accusing the staff of financial malfeasance. They were trying to, quote, "improve TCD and clean up government corruption." They almost succeeded in destroying it altogether, which may have been their intent. Their claims were embedded by We the Governed, a libertarian-focused website that writes stories about the abuse and overreach of government. The story about TCD on this website was full of lies, twisted the facts to support its right-wing anti-government bias, slandered TCD employees and its newly-elected commissioner, and offered as proof of their financial mismanagement events from 20 years previous, when the current staff was in elementary school. The person behind this website was exposed for the fraud he is in October 2018, when he sent out deceitful election flyers in five Washington State races, including our Thurston County Commission race, meant to confuse voters into splitting the progressive vote. Thankfully, in both cases, the dirty tricks were exposed. The truth finally came to light. And now we can finally put the sorry history behind us and concentrate on the ever-more pressing work that needs to be done for the benefit of all the citizens of Thurston County. I urge you to pass Rates and Charges for five years. Please take my $5. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy, followed by Paul Pickett. Go, Betsy first. Betsy, Betsy. And please, ma'am, your last name when you get here.
I'm sticking with my Dutch dad, and it's DeVereeta. V sound where the W is.
Oh, V Vereeta, okay. Good, got it, thank you. And your address for the record, thank you.
My address is 13136 201st Avenue in Rochester, also known as Independence Valley. I was appointed to the Conservation District in May of this year, so I'm new. I'm excited to see how much progress we were making towards rebuilding our budget and staff. It's really fun to watch it grow. I'm recently a retired organic crop farmer who has lived on the Chehalis River floodplain for 36 years and had water in my house twice. Farming on the floodplain has its challenges, but programs provided through the CD have helped a great deal. I'd like to mention just some of the cost-share projects that I have seen my neighbors utilize and/or taken advantage of myself. I restored eight acres of my farmland to native habitat because I wanted to increase the diversity of my farm and create buffers to the flooding river. There is also on my property a composting facility that was installed with the farm that now leases my land, so a different person, but it's on my property. And that helps capture nutrients and helps manage waste. There's a salmon-friendly stream crossing that was installed across the way on property that's been owned by the same family for over 100 years. There are at least five high tunnels, which are giant plastic greenhouses, which allow farmers to extend their season. They keep the ground covered so the rainwater does not cause runoff and allows the soil to retain fertilizers and nutrients. This improves the economic feasibility of farming year-round. As you know, our Olympia market is open year-round now. I've seen fencing installed to keep livestock out of streams and keep manure and sediment out of our rivers. There's soil testing. There's assistance with irrigation efficiency, which uses drip systems and installs more efficient pumps, so it saves energy and water, which we need to address as climate change moves forward. There's also critter pads and poultry equipment that's for rent. All these projects keep farmers farming. It doesn't matter how much land is set aside for farming if obstacles to farming make it unfeasible. The property of Wash, sorry, the population of Washington and Thurston County is growing fast with no end in sight. Drought and wildfires are compelling people to migrate north. The Growth Management Act, established in 1990, requires county governments, and I quote, "to reduce urban sprawl, preserve rural character, maintain open spaces, and protect natural resources." That's what Thurston Conservation District does. That's what all Conservation Districts do. With population growth, pressure to develop small parcels will increase. But with adequate funding, the Conservation District offers amazing educational tools and can help newcomers be good stewards of our natural resources. Finally, I want to thank you...
Go ahead.
Five years. I hope you'll support us for five years.
Thank you, Betsy.
Excuse me, the front door is locked. If people are leaving, they're trying to get in, but the doors are all locked.
Okay, please stand by. We'll get that taken care of right away.
Go ahead.
Okay. So Paul Pickett, followed by Martin McCallum. And thank you very much for letting us know.
Hey, thank you. My name's Paul Pickett. I live at 4040 Gold Harbor Road Northeast in Olympia. It's, I own 3 1/3 acres of unincorporated county. It's-- I own three and a third acres of unincorporated county, and I am a supervisor with Thurston Conservation District, currently the chair. And I wanted to thank you for moving forward with the hearing and with the process to establish rates and charges, renew rates and charges. A year ago, we were here, we're talking with you, and a year ago, you entrusted us with rates and charges, and I would call it a conditional trust because you did it for one year, and there were good reasons for that. So I think, at the time, we're talking about looking at the Conservation District, how to make it better. Not that, you know, there may, whatever, you can argue what problems we had, but we really-- I'm a believer in continuous improvement, and I think, I was a PD Commissioner for many years, and wanted to bring better governance to the Conservation District. So I think we've been successful. With the principles of responsibility, accountability, and commitment to continuous improvement, we're back again and hoping for your support for another five years. A lot of things have happened. Some of them have already been mentioned. Our board had governance training. We had a clean audit as three years that the state auditor looked at, no findings. And so that was really a positive endorsement for what we're doing. We've been able to run much more efficient meetings, going two hours instead of seven or eight. We've been able to get our minutes finished, turned around within a month, instead of having them linger for over a year. We have revised policy. We started a process of revising our policies, updating ones to help support. We've added consent calendars and some other things to help this efficiency. And I think really, a year ago, about a year ago, the Conservation Commission had suspended our funding and had basically given us what I would call four red cards for violations. But then they've now given us a clean bill of health. We're green on everything. Our money's restored, and they even said, "We don't really need our staff to be there. You guys are doing so great." So I think this is all really great. We're getting grants, as you heard from Sarah. We're getting hiring staff. We hired Sarah as Executive Director. We looked at three really qualified candidates, and she was by far the superior candidate. And so we're excited to have her on board permanently. We're beginning the process of strategic planning, and we're really excited about the future. There are all kinds of things we can be doing to serve this county even better and be a resource for every citizen. We want to address emerging challenges such as diversity, underrepresented members of the community that should be getting more attention, the emerging challenges of climate change. We want more public involvement. And so this is an investment in the community, and I hope that you can see it that way. It's good for the economy. We bring money and grant money into the community. Good for the environment, good for the quality of life, and I would invite you to come out and see some of our projects sometime. It's kind of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin McCallum, followed by Lisa Sezanne.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Martin McCallum. I live in 2009 Columbia Street Southwest in Olympia. I'm a landowner within the official boundaries of the Thurston Conservation District. I wanted to start by reading the vision statement, the current vision statement of the Thurston Conservation District. Its vision is to create healthy, functioning ecosystems in Thurston County through advocacy, education, and technical assistance efforts, thereby empowering every citizen of Thurston County to be a steward of the environment. I support that vision, and I support the work of the Thurston Conservation District. Really like the work of the South Sound Green with its education programs for youth, just to name one. I have many years of experience as a grant manager in public administration, and through that experience, I know how important it is to have sustained funding, because when you are on the scoring committee for grants, whether it's federal, state, foundation, you look to see about the stability of the organization, to see if it's going to be there and have funding through the funding life of the project. So not only is it important to have multi-year funding through rates and charges for the district, it also helps to sustain professional staff, so you have the excellence that you would wish as members of the commission to bring forward the work and the vision of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Sezanne, followed by T J Johnson. Did I get it right?
Short person.
Did I get your name right?
Hello, good evening. My name is Lisa Sezanne. I live at 30341st Avenue Northeast in Olympia. I am speaking today in support of the rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District. I moved to this area a little over two years ago from Los Angeles, where I had been a horticulturist and garden designer at a Los Angeles County Botanic Garden. I specialized in native plants, water-wise gardens, and was active in the L.A. Conservation Garden community, including as a board member of my local chapter of the California Native Plant Society. I was eager to learn how to practice conservation gardening here in the Pacific Northwest. One of my first contacts when I arrived was with the T C D. I took many of their excellent classes taught by knowledgeable, skilled, and very supportive instructors, including a class on soils by current supervisor, T J Johnson. What I learned was invaluable, and I was excited to find out that the T C D could send a staff member to my land, my property, to advise me. But when I gave my zip code, I was told that they had not yet received the grant to fund sending someone to my area. I was told to call them in a month. I did. Still no grant. I called a few months later, same story. We all know why that happened. The old Board of Supervisors basically disabled the T C D. The current board is working hard and efficiently to get the T C D back on track. Commissioner Edwards, you may not remember this, but you and I met at the Niskuale Land Trust meeting earlier in the summer. We had a nice chat out in the parking lot, and I was so pleased to hear your concern for the salmon. I heard you reiterate that concern at the rates and charges briefing given by the T C D to the commissioners in July. You asked Executive Director Sarah Moorhead if the T C D could help protect salmon, and she responded affirmatively. We all know there's much the T C D can do, and you've already heard examples just from the testimony prior to mine. With proper funding, the T C D will once again be able to fulfill its legally mandated mission, the reason the national conservation districts were created in the first place, to educate citizens how to conserve our precious natural environment. I urge you, please, to vote yes on the rates and charges for five years. Thank you.
Thank you. T J, followed by Tony Wilson.
Good evening, T J Johnson. I live at 928 Wilson Street Northeast in the unincorporated part of Thurston County. I'm a full-time farmer, and I was elected to the Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors earlier this year, and I currently serve as the vice chair. I want to thank you first and foremost for approving rates and charges last year and listening to the overwhelming public testimony that said that that was a valuable investment for our community. That funding has allowed us to restore countywide services that have been really important to many landowners, including the soil testing program, the equipment rental program, farm planning, and really to ramp up the voluntary storage ship planning program and not have to contract that out to another conservation district, which is what we were doing. As you've heard from many other speakers, over the last year, we've had the state auditors say that we have had a clean audit for the last three years. We've had the Washington State Conservation Commission restore us to the good boy club and got us off of the bad boy list. And we've also got a new board that's working together very well, very professionally, with a great deal of respect. We don't always agree on everything, but we treat each other with respect, and we embody the values that I think this community expects from elected officials. We've implemented new oversight procedures for our staff and for financial procedures, and we went through recently a very good, very open public process to hire an executive director, and I'm very happy that we hired Sarah Moorhead, who had been our interim executive director, which was the overwhelming consensus of the public who participated in that process. So the next step for the district is to provide long-term, stable funding. We don't want to have to come here every year and go through the process on our end and on your end of asking for funding. We think that's a waste of resources. It would better be directed to serving the landowners in our community. So we would ask that you approve our proposal for a minimum of five years of funding, which would coincide with the five-year strategic planning process that we are embarking on now and which will culminate in early 2020. Our public process on funding this year found 100% of the people who came to us supportive of continuing the rates and charges system, with most of them arguing for a minimum of five years and some saying as long as 10 years. And that would be consistent with the other conservation districts in the state, most of whom have five- to 10-year terms for their local funding system. And then finally, in closing, I agree with my friend Jim Gochet about the need for election reform on the conservation districts. We're engaged in that process. We're working through the State Conservation Commission, and we're working with other conservation districts statewide to try to modernize the election system. That's not something that we can change here locally. We understand it needs to change, and we're working with the other districts in the state to make that happen, but it's really outside of the scope of what we're here for tonight. So tonight, I'm just asking you, we're on track. Provide us stable funding so we can move into the future.
Thank you. Tony Wilson, followed by E J Zeta.
Hi, my name is Tony Wilson. I live in unincorporated Thurston County at 74089th Avenue Southwest. I too support the Thurston Conservation District's mission as a nonpartisan, nonregulatory agency, encouraging farmers to practice their profession in a way that also protects the surrounding environment. I believe that the district is very effective at their mission and that they have earned a five-year term for the rates and charges funding. The T C D is staffed by some really stellar individuals. I want to call a couple of them to your attention today. One is a recently hired accounting professional, Susan Shelton, who began as a temp early last year and is made-- was made permanent in November. She and her husband are property owners near Tenino. She holds a PhD in policy analysis and public management, including extensive coursework in a nonprofit and government-fund-based budgeting and accounting. Susan also attended Oxford as a Fulbright scholar and has 10 years' experience in accounting. Another staff member worth mentioning is Nora White. Among other things, Nora manages the district's elections. She has a farming background as well. Her family farms sheep for meat and fiber near Tenino, and Nora is the farm manager. She attended college in North Carolina at a school that required each student to work a job on campus as an integral part of their education. The school philosophy is that work and education are both critical parts of personal development. Nora interned at Olympia's renowned grub program here in Olympia while she was in college in the summers, and she's currently studying for her master's degree. Highly qualified and committed people staff this district, managed by a board of supervisors who are also dedicated to the mission of an environmental stewardship in agricultural practice. The board holds two meetings each month, a work session and a regular meeting. Each work session meeting includes a presentation and briefing from a staff member about their individual activities on behalf of the district. This is done by a different staff member each month, helps keep the supervisors up to speed on all district operations on the ground. The regular board meeting's on a different day and is held late in the afternoon to allow public engagement. Rates and charges funding enables the district to leverage the financial base to increase access to grant funding so that they can accomplish much more soil and water conservation in the county. I urge you to approve the district's request for five years of rates and charges funding. I personally welcome the opportunity to contribute the 10 cents a week that will be assessed against my property in support of this agency's unique mission, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, sir. E J, followed by Phyllis Farrell.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name's E J Zeta. I'm a farmer. I live in South County, South Thurston County. We raise beef cattle and poultry, and I was elected Chair of Thurston County Agriculture Advisory Committee for quite a few years. I want to thank everybody in this room who's helped us understand the history of the Thurston Conservation District and whose work to strengthen the Conservation District in recent years, and congratulations to Sarah Moorhead for being approved as our permanent executive director. I support the five-year extension of rates and charges. Here's my five bucks. I actually pay about 15 bucks a year. When we got started in farming over 20 years ago, Thurston Conservation District helped us with our first farm plan. They're helping us update our farm plan right now. In the intervening years, they've done soil tests for us, and I learned that the main thing we need to do to improve our soil is improve the pH. So I was able to rent a lime spreader from them to improve our pH. When we harvest poultry, we can rent the Featherman from them. It's a terrific unit with the plucker, the magic fingers, and the skull tank. I don't know how many times I rented that. And farmers cooperate. One person rents it for the weekend, and we get it to the next person. If I use it on Sunday, Saturday, somebody else can use it on Sunday. And T C D helps us all work together on this. They help me upgrade the farm plan, and I'm trying to connect with a voluntary stewardship program now. Thurston Conservation District helps farmers and land managers protect the land, protect the water, and five bucks a year for a parcel to protect our farms and fish and water is a real bargain. Thank you for supporting the rates and charges last year, and please extend that for the next five years. Make it easy for everybody. Give the T C D the financial stability they need to continue strengthening and doing their good work. And I would say, we don't need to impose any conditions on that. It would be great if Thurston County Auditor would help with the elections. I think that might be easier on everybody, but really, I wouldn't see any need to impose any conditions on the five-year extension. Just let them do their good work. It's a bargain. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Farrell, followed by Bob Barnes.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I live in unincorporated Thurston County in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood. I've written to you previously as an individual, but tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the South Sound Sierra Club group, representing over 1,000 members here in Thurston County. I'm going to be mercifully brief. I'm going to recommend that you approve the five-year rates and charges, which will allow for stability in funding and long-range planning. These efforts will help us protect our environment, habitat, and water quality. And you've heard lots of reasons why already, so I won't be repetitive, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Bob Barnes, followed by, I have Lisa Ornstein. Lisa, you didn't indicate yes or no whether you'd like to testify, so you're welcome to come up. But go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioners, for holding this hearing this evening. My name is Robert Barnes, and I live at 220159th Avenue Northwest in Olympia. I have, my wife and I live on seven and a half acres out on Cooper Point. It's really important green space. The development in Thurston County is at an astounding rate. You can see the conversion of these properties before your very eyes. As a taxpayer of Thurston County, I'm happy, willing, and able to pay the proposed rates and charges assessment for the Thurston Conservation District. I'll be paying $5.67 this year, which I think is a pretty minimal amount, as Doug said. That's about the price of one latte. Anyway, I have been associated with T C D for over 30 years. I used to work for Department of Transportation, and we coordinated closely with T C D. I found them to be a professional and reliable organization during that time. I previously supported and testified to the new rates and charges funding proposal. I recommend a longer term than one year and recommend a five-year term for better reliability and planning purposes. This funding system needs to be predictable and reliable for both funding organizations and to retain experienced staff. A longer-term funding system would support job security. I'm on the board of the South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group. We do a lot of grant writing, and we need that stable funding system in order to get those grants. The grant organizations are not going to be very supportive if it's only on a yearly basis. I think they're going to be really reluctant. Anyway, I recommend the funding term for the new rates and charges be extended to the five-year term. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa Ornstein, you're welcome to address the board if you wish.
I have to leave.
Oh, she left? And then I have Marcy Clever.
My name is Marcy Clever. I live in Thurston County. I've been raising cattle for over 20 years, and I've used the Conservation District for various projects, always found them professional, always found them full of ideas, and I've partaken of their knowledge, their classes, even their grants at times. And it's just a wonderful thing to know that's in your back pocket, and a lot of people will say it's the best-kept secret in the county. And I know they do everything they can to get the word out there, and perhaps if it was a general election for the commissioners, maybe it would help to get that out there, and it sounds like you guys are working towards that, which I know it's costly, and maybe you want to up their budget so that they can do that. Because I think that's a win-win. They'll get more people involved and be able to do more things for more people. We all drink the same water. It all comes from underground, and if we don't take care of the ground above it, we're all going to have polluted water. So I don't need to tell you anything more about what the Conservation District does. You know that. You've heard lots of testimony on that. But what I do want to stress is, it's important, when you run a business, to be able to have stable funding. If you're an employee, you want to know that when you sign up for that job, that you're going to be there for more than one year, because if you're only there for, funding's only for one or two years, that can be an issue when you have a couple of places to look for and get hired for jobs. And I know that people left the C D when things were happening, we'll put it that way, and they've gotten stable jobs at good other conservation districts. And we don't want to lose our talent. We need to be able to recruit the talent and keep the talent, and it sounds like our bookkeepers got a lot of talent. So, again, I support the five-year. I just think it's the way to go, and I think if people knew how little they paid, it's a drop in a sea of money that we pay in our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That exhausts the list of people that have signed up, but wait, there's more. If you have not signed up, would like, but would still like to testify, you're more than welcome to come up. Anybody? Anybody want to come up and testify? Anyone? All right. Thank you very much for being respectful and coming tonight. Is there a motion to close and adjourn the, or close the public hearing?
Could I ask one question?
Of who?
Well, it might have to be one of the participants, just for clarification, but I could ask you. Can I ask you something?
You just did.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to know--
Welcome to the show.
I think it was Marcy said there was some lady that had come, and then she had to leave. I'd just like to know if she signed up in favor or opposed, or no comment.
But didn't indicate, no, there's no comment?
No comment, okay.
Yeah, there's no comment.
I do wonder, though, how many people like myself were locked up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only my guy in was there, employee, and was leading the, we faked the license.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we're sorry for that.
Okay.
You have a lady that wants, a lady out there. I don't know--
Oh, go ahead. Come to the podium, then, please. Thank you, ma'am. That's where the microphone is. Thank you.
Lisa Ornstein and I, I'm Shari Silverman, and I live on, where do I live? Tuscan Elaine in Tumwater. Lisa Ornstein and I are friends. We've discussed this issue, and even though she's not here and she did have to leave, she is very much supportive of the five-year funding. Thank you.
Whoa, wait, wait, wait. You were really quick on the trigger there. What was your first name?
Shari, S-H-A-R-I.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. All right. Motion to close the public hearing?
I do want to apologize that the door was locked, though.
Oh, my goodness.
That bugs me, but anyway, can't do anything about it now, so we'll just have to go. Most of those folks, I bet, were in favor. So, okay. I would make a motion-- I would make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing of September 24th, 2019. Any further discussion on that motion, of closing? Nope?
Not on the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. And I turn to the county manager, Romero Chavez, for the next steps.
Yeah, next, commissioners, I will bring this item. Can you hear me? Okay. I thought there were some conversations back there. Yes, I will bring this item for your consideration next Tuesday morning, where you will have the opportunity to review all the public testimony you have received. Excuse me? And at that point, I will ask you two questions. Would you like to exercise your legislative authority to approve the recent charges? And I will bring an ordinance at a later date, and also, I will ask the commission at that point, for how long? From one to five years, if they, if, as you see, fit, based on the public testimony you have received? And again.
I thought it was one to 10 years. Wasn't, isn't the range one to 10?
No, actually, you can extend that from one to five to 10, as long as you see fit. Yeah. The proposal is for five years, but certainly you, as you exercised last year, you only approved for one year, and then the range is wider for you.
Well, zero to 10, right? In theory.
Well, zero, if the board approves supporting rates and charges, a zero will not be feasible. It will be from one to 10. Yeah.
But the plan, the proposal, is five.
Yeah. So the, anyways, I will bring a summary of the comments you have received next week, and it will be a very high level in terms of who, how many have supported, how many have opposed, and at that point, you will exercise the conversation among yourselves.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Now you can ask questions.
Will this be on the agenda setting for a discussion next Tuesday?
Yes, and that will be, it will be a live-streamed meeting, so the public.
It will be live-streamed for the public.
Yeah.
But the public is also invited to attend our agenda settings to hear any discussion that we might have.
Yeah, the, every single meeting the commissioners have is open to the public.
And what's the date on that again?
Next Tuesday.
That is next Tuesday, October 1st.
October 1.
At the time?
The.
9:00 AM here.
But this is going to be among many items the commissioners will be discussing on that agenda, so it's not going to be a single item on October 1st.
It's a three-hour meeting.
9 to 12.
And do you post the agenda?
We post the agenda 24 hours in advance.
Yeah. All right. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I will second. I just want to apologize, I want to just, before we adjourn, because it looks like we're about to do it. There are a lot of people here, and they may have questions for me, and I would love to answer them, but I've got to meet my daughter's curriculum night, so I am shooting out of here. It's no disrespect. Please call me or email me if you have any questions about, about this. Apologize.
So it's been moved in second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
It passes, anyway. Aye. That's going to hold me up.
And again, I apologize for that door being locked. That is really a bug.